Grooving.
Yeah, we'll give, we'll give like one or two more minutes and then as people join, I'll just click them in.
That sounds like a good plan for Thursday evening.
You got the guitars behind you?
I've, uh, yeah, I'm full guitar mode. One, one of several guitars that John knows about.
Yeah, mine are all in cases.
Yeah, I like to hang them on the wall for easy access. When, when the inspiration strikes, as they say.
I haven't figured out how to do on my, uh, my big screen yet to split it up so I can see more people. Right now I'm seeing one, two, like 10 people.
Yeah, you can go, I think down at the bottom, there's some more options and you can change the layout, I think is what you're looking for. It's the three dots, three vertical dots, and then you got whiteboard and change the layout and you can say how many people you want. Do you see that, the tiled?
Oh, yeah.
Let's try that.
If I can get, so if I change the layout, I guess I can get tiled and we'll see how many that gives me.
Right, but at the bottom, you can increase the amount of tiles.
Oh, yeah, you can do that.
There's a slide, everybody gets smaller. It's kind of like, it's like, it's like Alice in Wonderland going down the rabbit hole.
Yeah, I did it for 30.
Yes, you in the, in the March hair and the Cheshire Cat.
Yeah. All right, I think we have, uh, enough here that we can start. We've got 20, 20 or so. So, uh, good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. All right, cool. So I wanted to welcome everybody and, uh, and welcome Nelson Pass, longtime amplifier, pre amplifier designer and, has, has made a lot of good amplifiers. I've got a couple of them and I've always been a fan and, so let's make them welcome and probably start this out a little bit, uh, just, maybe Nelson, if you could just give a quick bio of, uh, you know, how, uh, you know, the companies that you worked for and that sort of thing and how you got started in the audio business.
Well, um, I always liked to build stuff even as a fairly young child, so that's, those are the kind of activities I had a natural inclination to construct things. And I enjoyed the process and of course you always learn something. I started building speakers when I was about 16. Just about the time I got a driver's license also and putting together hi-fi equipment. And unfortunately, I, I worked for my father who was in the aircraft industry and he had extensive shop. So I was able to actually get things done with, you know, tools and materials and such. When I was supposedly being paid minimum wage to pump gas out into the aircraft, which interestingly were often the planes that were flying people to Sea Ranch where I now, uh, live, where I now live. Anyways, so I started building speakers initially and I had a, I had a Gerard turntable and a Radio Shack amplifier and some low range speakers in what were initially cardboard boxes in which later, you know, graduated to being nice wooden boxes and they eventually got a tweeter and so on. So that, that was my, those are my high school days. By the time I got to school, which was at UCA, UC Davis, uh, I discovered that there was a pretty large population of people who were deeply into the audio equipment. And I fell in with that crowd. In fact, actually in my first year, I started fixing, fixing things for people in, in terms of amplifiers mostly. And, uh, and these invariably were kits that got constructed within didn't work. So I, I got involved with that and, uh, started building some of my own stuff. My second year, uh, is when I really, really kind of got going. And, uh, I had an apartment with actually four other guys who all were into hi-fi. We had, in the little living room in this apartment, we had a, we had four hi-fi systems all hooked up on one wall in, shall we say, parallel and we could fire them all up at the same time. It was, uh, it was very interesting, but we thought at the time that it was very spectacular. And fortunately we had good relations with the neighbors on both sides. In fact, I, I later married one of the ladies who was on the other side of the wall, uh, in another apartment, so. Then, you know, hanging out with these kinds of people, I also had, I ran into, uh, people who are considerably more advanced in, in this regard. One of them was a gentleman named Peter Wareback, who was a certified genius and, um, he introduced me to, uh, the boys at ESS. He went to work for them because they decided that they wanted to get into the amplifier business. And he already had designed an amplifier which was kind of a, kind of a, a small improvement on what Bob Carver was doing with the Phase 700s and 400s and so on. He came up with a little more sophisticated front end and he was, he was building amplifiers. And I, I actually got some boards from him and I began building amplifiers along with another guy. And, uh, and before long, I ended up getting introduced to the people at ESS where he had taken this job. And I sat there and I, I was actually looking for them to, uh, help me get enclosures built because they, they had a nice wood shop and everything. And they had actually staff who were building things and I was going, you know, maybe we could work something out, uh, because I had, uh, I had access to the anechoic chamber at Davis. I had during my summer employment there. This was in, uh, starting in 69, but, but in through 70 and into 71, I worked for both the physics departments and also the engineering department, which were two separate buildings. In the middle of which was the, uh, the Crocker Nuclear Lab, which was the cyclotron that they used to make the bombs in World War II. It got moved up to Davis when Berkeley started getting the larger and larger cyclotrons. So there was this happy three buildings and, um, so I had the keys to the anechoic chamber over at engineering and that was an attractive proposition from their standpoint. But actually about halfway into the discussion, they just said, well, you know, how about if we just hire you? How does that sound? And I, of course, that sounds great. So there I was suddenly working the, uh, the night shift at ESS in Sacramento. And they had just moved from a little, uh, well, actually prior to me meeting them, they had been in a house in Sacramento. But then they moved to a small industrial spot, uh, which, uh, you know, had a couple thousand square feet. Rather quite larger than the house. And, um, so I began working there. I worked there in, actually I worked there at nights. I went to school by day. I was taking a full load of physics. And, um, it just kind of like started from there. And, and within, uh, within a month of starting at ESS, uh, a gentleman named Oscar Hile came knocking on the door and he had a, his tweeter. And he was looking for somebody to make speakers with it. And they, they went, hello sailor. So immediately began, uh, you know, made arrangements with Oscar to, uh, you know, get the, get the loudspeaker developed and into production and they were going to sell it and they would have the exclusive and so on and so forth. And based on all of that, they went out and borrowed, begged and stole money so as to finance the construction of a larger, well, actually not construction, but they got into a larger facility and began building a, a large, fairly large, uh, facility for the purpose of, of making these loudspeakers in, in real quantities and bringing as much stuff in-house as possible. So then it was just like, I, so I, I, I just, I had the good fortune of being there at just the time when the whole thing happened. And so I was in on the ground floor, as it were. And my job was, uh, measuring, uh, testing, developing crossovers, general farting around. And, um, and Peter Wareback was, uh, doing the amplifier design. And, and I got quite close to Peter for a couple of reasons. One, we were of like, uh, of like personalities, but the other was that, um, I was deeply interested in what he was doing with the amplifiers. And I found amplifiers somewhat more interesting than speakers. So, uh, I worked for, uh, well, ESS came out of the gate and of course it was a big huge success and you know, that, the story is all historical. I left ESS, uh, about, uh, well, at the end of 72, after nearly two years. And I also had graduated, uh, from Davis. And, um, I had, uh, I had a good friend there named Renee Bezney, who was, uh, one of, was actually their marketing director early on. And he and I got together and decided that, uh, well, it's kind of like, well, if these clowns can do it, anybody can. So we decided to start an amplifier company and we called it Threshold and we incorporated. And in fact, you know, this started me down memory lane here, uh, this afternoon because I went through the questions. And I actually pulled up a file which is a massive file of old photos. And one of those photos though is the very first amplifiers that we produced, which was the 800A being built in the garage of the house that I was renting in Sacramento. And so, uh, it was just kind of like, here, here was the first article. So I had prior to this, back in, um, late 72, going into 73, designed an amplifier that was, would later be known as a non-switching amplifier. That is to say, it wasn't what, what we think of as pure Class A because it didn't run this high bias. But what it did do was it was, it was set up so that the output transistors never actually switched off. Because what we recognize is that there's not only a nice glitch to be found at the point where both devices are not conducting, not, you know, both devices are not conducting in some way, but also that there was a, a lag time to get them started. So the presumption here was not that it would be like incredibly more linear as such, although a little more linear. But rather that, the turn-on time of the transistors would be heightened by the fact that they already had some current running through them at all time. So that we didn't have the, the, the kind of situation where, and the, the item that did, the item that did switch in that was a, was a high-speed diode that, you know, had very, very fast response because it was teensy, teensy, teensy. And so I worked up a little circuit that did that. And that became the progenitor of what became the non-switching amplifiers that you see. Well, that became, coming out of Japan, it was quite big later in that decade. But I wasn't really happy with that amplifier because it really, uh, it, I, I saw where it could be improved. And, and what I did was, is like, instead of having a constant bias circuit, I had a circuit that responded to the output current of the amplifier. And so it cranked up the bias, uh, in real time, uh, up and down, uh, depending on the output current. So that you could not only keep the, uh, the current going through all the output devices at any given time, but also it had a nice gentle ramp up and ramp down on these phenomena so that it didn't create artifacts that were problematic with the non-switching. So, um, that became, uh, the 800A. It was a very large, very large amplifier and managed to up the efficiency, the quote theoretical efficiency of, of a Class A amplifier from 50%, well, from idling at its, at its rated power to about 50% of its rated power. So that upped the efficiency on it quite a bit. So it's rated at, um, let's see, uh, it was rated at 200 a channel. It was a stereo amplifier. It had, um, let's see, I'm trying to remember. I think it was 64 output devices and, um, idled at, uh, about two-thirds of that figure. So it, it idled at something in excess of a couple hundred watts.
Wow.
But, so it wasn't really like, oh, well, it's non-switching. Beyond that, it, it ran plenty hot because it had quite a bit of bias. It also, it also had multiple parallel devices. These were the faster Motorola, uh, stuff that had just come out. They were four megahertz. And so they were a lot faster than the old 3055s and what everybody else was playing with back then. And, um, in addition to that, it was a triple casco. In other words, the, this, we were trying to avoid second breakdown in the output devices. And the devices that we could get that were fast complementary followers, uh, they didn't have a hell of a lot of second breakdown capacity. And that, that is where the dissipation levels of a, of a transistor decline as the voltage goes up. So that at, at, at 10 volts across the transistor, you, you might be a 150 watt device, but at 20 volts, it's now a 100 watt device. And, uh, at 40 volts, it's a five watt device. So we started out by cascoating that and it still didn't get us quite to the level we want. So we triple cascoated that, probably the first example of such a thing. We, coming out of the gate, it was a big success. And, um, we managed to sell all we could make for quite a long time. We slowly built the company up, rented some space, started hiring people. And it was, it was just like ESS all over again. Even had many of the same kinds of problems. Meanwhile, as, as time went on, ESS encountered some rough terrain and ultimately ended up firing, uh, well, it ended up filing for bankruptcy. I like to think that I left at its peak. And, uh, also, there was a nice lady at, uh, ESS who, um, well, I told you I was working the night shift. So, uh, it so happened there were other people working the night shift because production had been ramped up and they were running two and even three shifts of people trying to get the product built. And, um, so there was this, there was this nice lady who was in, um, actually she was folding Heil diagrams. She was in the, uh, little depart, little department where they made the Heil diagram, folded them and glued them together and did the whole thing of assembly. And, uh, I was in charge of testing all this stuff. So I built a small anechoic chamber and we had a, a general radio strip chart recorder. And we could actually, you know, we could test each Heil diaphragm. And because there was considerable variability and it, it, you know, so there was a reject rate that was significant. And they were nuts about their quality. They really, they wanted to make sure everything was exactly right. Well, that kept me very busy. So, but one night I'm, I'm working away and, uh, this woman whose name is Jill is, is just sitting there in the, in the, uh, diaphragm department with nothing to do. Well, it turns out her husband, who was, uh, in production, was working the late shift and they only had one car between them. And so she had to sit during that time. And so, you know, I go, well, hey, you look like a smart kid. Come over here. Let me show you how to work this stuff. And so I taught her how to test the Heil diaphragms. And she was very successful at that. And in fact, later, uh, within the course of a year, she was in charge of quality control for the whole company. Of course, after I left ESS and started Threshold, one of the things I did was start acquiring where possible, some of the talent that they had. And she was one of them. And so she came to work for, uh, Threshold as well as a couple of other people. And, um, in fact, some of these people are still with, are with Pat's Labs today. I'll elucidate that later if you're interested, but.
I wanted to ask you one question. So, uh, it, with Threshold, did you, uh, there were, you know, you're pretty successful for, for, for a long time. Did you design everything there or did, there, there were some other designers like the, I mean, Doug was also, uh, a designer too. I don't know when he came on board, but there was, uh, other people as well, correct?
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll get to that.
Okay.
So, oh, well, the other thing about this is, is that later on I married Jill. Okay, so. And recently I was talking with Rick, well, ESS has undergone some other transitions even more recently than since the, uh, transfer of ownership to, uh, what was Leo's, which was a hi-fi chain down in Southern California. And, um, let's see, your story is, uh, what? Well, um, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, so I, I was talking to Ricky, who not up until recently was running what, what was left of ESS. And, um, he's telling me about, oh yeah, his, his wife, she folds the diaphragms. I go, you're gonna love this. My wife folded the diaphragms as well. So we had, we have that in common also. So anyways, uh, we actually did end up gathering quite a few people, uh, from ESS. And, and, and one of them, well, actually our accountant Barbara, uh, came, uh, came to, uh, Threshold. And also they had a, um, they had a major stockholder named Joe Sammett, who was, became, uh, very interested, uh, in, uh, in what we were doing. And, um, but, but his interest was, uh, well, first off, he was a good friend of Dan DiAgostino. And partly, and that relationship came from the fact that he had not only Dayton Wright loudspeakers, which Dan was the rep for back the, in those days. And they were made in Canada and, and, uh, Dan was the, essentially the US, uh, rep for, uh, for Dayton Wright. Well, Joe not only had a pair of Dayton Wrights, he had a stacked pair, he had two of them. And this is important because it, up to the, up at that date in time, it was the worst load an amplifier could drive known to man. It, it went down to an ohm and, and, uh, also was not very efficient. So, uh, Joe was, Joe was running stacked Macintoshes to, to drive those, you know, the, the big Macintoshes. And so he invited us down to take the 800A down there and, and play it for him. This is back when it was in prototype form. I had a lot of protection circuitry in the 800A. So we hooked it up and said, okay, let's see. And he, he, he put on some music and it was at a reasonable level, but it, the amp immediately just shut down because it saw that one ohm load reactive with that. And, uh, we went, oh, protection circuits shutting down. Well, we went back to Sacramento and trimmed back on the parameters of the protection circuits. Took it back down and I had backed it off quite a bit. And it, it went louder and then it shut down. We, we're going, oh, this is not good. And the third time around, I simply gutted the protection circuits altogether. And it played the, and it played the stacked Dayton Wrights. Well, Joe goes, wow, this is, this is really great. You guys wouldn't be interested in some investment capital, would you? So anyways, he became the third business partner at Threshold. And, um, we also, but we had gotten him by introduction from ESS because, uh, management at ESS was still quite friendly. And, um, Phil Coelho, who was the VP at, uh, at, at ESS, introduced us to Joe. He goes, you might want to talk to Joe because he's, he's a cool guy. He knows what's going on and he can also, you know, he can, he can do funding. So we had the three of us, plus we, we scored a number of employees, uh, from ESS. Jill being one and, uh, another being, well, initially, uh, Jill and also Barbara, who became our controller and who much later married Joe. And then, uh, and then, uh, Joe, oh, well, Joe, after a few years, we bought him out and he went over to go work for Dan DiAgostino at Crell. And, uh, the story there was, is that, um, oh, and Barbara went with her, with him, of course. And that was a successful thing partly because, well, Joe's talents were amazing. He was probably the, uh, probably the most discerning audiophile I have ever met. His hearing was fabulous and he was, he was crazed about audio. And he, he really pursued it on a constant and diligent basis. So, um, when Joe went over to go work with Dan at Crell, and by the way, I was friends with Dan, I'm still friends with Dan, uh, although he's, he's no longer at Crell and I'm not, no longer at Threshold. He, uh, he had occasion to, uh, need, he was actually starting up Crell Digital. He had occasion to need a digital engineer and he found one just off the boat from Ireland by the name of Desmond Harrington, who designed, uh, the D to A conversion. Well, you know, I won't, I don't know what portions of this, but I would say probably most of the D to A conversion product, uh, that Crell came out with. The other element that he got to be good at is Dan. Uh, Joe sent him off to school to learn industrial design. And so he suddenly started drawing up all these terrific faceplates and chassis and such. And all, all of a sudden, Crell's stuff started literally looking swell. I mean, you probably remember the transition from plain faceplate with, with Dan to, like, you, you saw them with the, uh, the fabulous meters and the great handles and, you know, the metalwork got really great. Well, that was, that was Harrington. However, um, meanwhile, back, back at the ranch, uh, we, we still muddled along. We, uh, we had the 800A, it was followed by a design, which was a smaller version of that without the fans and everything called the 400A. And, um, then later on, there was a, a, a improved version called the 4000. And also, let's see, the, uh, pardon? Oh, well anyways, we, and then, um, so it got to be what, 1980 by then? We actually had, you know, in quite, in the course of about three, four years, had gone from nothing to, um, uh, something. In fact, I was just going through some of the stuff. We were, uh, back then, Stereo Review published a list, not in the magazine, but to people who advertised there and so on. They had done surveys of, uh, who, who, what companies were selling what and in what percentages they were in, and what the dollars were involved. And when it came to power amplifiers, we found that we were number five on the list, which was amazing when you consider that there were people like, you know, sansui and technics and so on below us. Macintosh was above, Phase Linear was above us, but you get the idea. We had come that far, uh, that. So in the, um, the late seventies, early, right around 1980, uh, I, I got the bug to work on another design, which became ultimately the stasis amplifier. That was predicated on the idea that, uh, the amplifier could have essentially kind of two output stages, one of which is the high-power version and the other which is, um, a lower power but deeply Class A version. And, uh, the two operated in, uh, in conjunction. They were connected, both connected to the load and they were both connected to the input. But the idea here was is that, and it was a little bit like what, um, uh, the feed forward technique that was being done by Quad, where there, as a concept, you have a, a big output channel and you have a little output channel. And you had the little channel connected to the load so it can rescue the performance of the larger output channel. And so, uh, we, uh, actually we got a, we named it a stasis and we got a patent on it. And, uh, then we went to town. In fact, that, that formed the basis for, uh, Threshold product through its, uh, entire lifespan.
Hey Nelson, uh, we have a question here from Chris Parker.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to remind everybody that we're, have a time limit today, unfortunately. Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to remind everybody that we have a time limit today, unfortunately, of 60 minutes and we're already 30 minutes into our, our time with Nelson. This is, this is a Google Meet limitation, unfortunately. And I just want to make sure that everyone can ask their questions and would like to ask questions. That's all I wanted to just remind everybody.
Well, we can, we can do this any way you want. I've got a list of questions here, but you, you're free to go ahead and ask.
Yeah, well, I, I just wanted to, some of this stuff you've already touched on. I, I, I wanted to ask a question with regard to from, from Threshold to Pass Labs, how was that transition? What was the, the, the course of action on that? Because the Pass Labs was early nineties, I believe, correct?
Well, Threshold was always strapped for cash. We, we, and, and partly because it was just poorly managed. And back then, I, 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 I was happy to not be part of management and I was happy to let other people worry about those things and discovered that there wasn't an adequate amount of coordination. And a lot of things happened that were very expensive to the company and, and basically chewed up the, the money that was being made. I, we did several things to help that situation. Partly we did some licensing stuff. We did a license with Nakamichi for a rather large sum of money and allowed them to use the stasis patent and to do product. And they also took over the distribution in Japan. And let's see, also I had a, an arrangement with SoundStream developing product for the SoundStream Auto Sound product, which was coming just out of the gate subsequent to that. And also our good friends at AdCom, I designed amplifiers for them, the GFA 555 and its brethren. And a preamp, which were, apparently the 555 is one of the most successful pieces in history, or at least so I'm told. So, but the point was, is that financially, the whole thing was hand to mouth. Eventually we got an offer from a company called Dynatec back in Massachusetts to basically purchase the company, but leave it running as, on its own. Which usually the story on such things like this is that it's a disaster because the parent company interferes with all the good things that the, you know, the originators were doing. In, in point of fact, Dynatec was the most faultless company I ever saw. They were absolutely terrific and supportive. What it really came down to is, oh, we were still pretty inept and unable in terms of being able to manage our own affairs. In the end though, I decided that I had to, I had to get out and do something else. And so in 1991, I formed Pass Labs, I left Threshold and I formed Pass Labs over the, over the course of a couple of long weekends. And managed to snag a couple of people to come with me. And, oh, and Jill was already married to me, so I had, I was already covered on that front. And I wanted a clean slate. And so I, I had at that point, a nice, I had about 4,000 square feet of space on property up in Forest Hill. I was fully capable of, and, and I had a pocket full of money at that, from the buyout. So I just simply financed Pass Labs and put it, put it across my driveway from my house. And I hired most of my neighbors, so I never had any problems with, you know, neighbors complaining about all the parking and all this stuff because they were working there. And I managed to also snag numerous people from Threshold. And the rest is history in, in that sense.
Okay, I, the, I wanted to give an opportunity if any of the other folks here had some of their questions. We still got some of my questions as well, but I wanted to give some folks a chance. Is there anybody who would like to ask Nelson? Any questions with regard to what we discussed or any other issues, models and that sort of thing? Anybody? Chris?
Okay, if no one else has a question, I'll go with mine. Nelson, great to talk with you this evening. I have built your AmpCamp amp design that you generously donated the design to the DIY community. And I very much enjoyed building the app and, and I thank you for your contributions in that area to the, to the DIY community. I know you're very active. We appreciate that. I had a quick question, kind of two-parter, related to your design process. I know from reading other interviews you've given that you have a small group of listeners, I think, that will typically listen to a new design you're working on, I guess, and give you feedback about what they're hearing. And I was interested, how do you translate their feedback, you know, maybe saying it's something's too dry or some, some adjective into actually figuring out what to change? Is it based on measurements or is it intuitive because of your decades of design knowledge? And then a follow-up to all this is, I'm going to debate about THD distortion and noise in, in, in amplifier products or any audio product. Is there a threshold where you think it's too much or or too little? I'd be interested to hear what you thought about the whole, because we have products that have very low distortion and noise and we have other products that don't, and people have different views on those products. Thank you.
Well, with regards to the first question, one of the first things I managed to do was to lure Joe Sammett back from Crell and, and Desmond Harrington, who was also doing the industrial design there. And that, that marked the point where our faceplate started looking really swell. And but also I had, I had Joe, who was a terrific management personality. I'm sorry that I ever let him go in the first place, but I managed to get him back after 15 years. Joe, as I mentioned, was probably the most astute audiophile on the planet, had the best ears I ever ran into, far better than mine. Also, he had trained Desmond personally in terms, in terms of the art of listening. And also was, was good at working with people to develop their capacity to judge audio equipment. So the minute I had Joe back in the, in the place, it was, it was a lot easier for me because I'm, I'm not a, I'm not a person who can, who can avoid being influenced by what I, by what I know is under the hood or what special trick that I happen to really like or not. In the case of Joe, I would hand him two amplifiers that were identical to look at. They looked very close to being identical on the inside, but they had no markings or anything. I go, Joe, here's two amplifiers. Take a listen. Let me know what you think. And he would come back after a couple of weeks. This was not one of those quick things. He would live with product. And he would, he would come back and he'd go, well, oh, by the way, I put them in the back of his trunk, so you didn't even have any clues as to, you know, any type of thing. It was all secret. And here, Joe, in the back of your trunk are two amplifiers. So he'd come back though and go, well, this one over here is really quite good. This one over there needs a little help. And so he was his polite way of saying that he did not pass muster in some way. Now, sometimes it was not clear as to what that would, would be, but I always took his word for it. Also though, well, and, and we had this wonderful partnership for many years. Unfortunately, a few years ago, Joe passed away. But he had trained, including me, but also Desmond and well, actually that, that became the core group. We had, at, at, at Threshold, I had acquired the talents of Wayne Colburn, who was a rabid audiophile, but also very much just a talented designer. And ultimately, oh, I should, I should clearly mention Michael Vatalaas at Threshold also, who has his own company in Sweden building amplifiers. And of course, as you know, the, the boys at Coda, which are Eric Lockley, Lauren Peterson, Doug Dale, and actually, I'm not sure who else at this point, have, have managed to have some success building amplifiers that are in the same kind of strain. So as it sits right now though, the listening panel consists mostly of, again, I've got tons of these people from the old days brought forward, you know, both in production and in terms of development. And among them also, besides Wayne, is, is Mike James, who was a technician at Threshold. And all these people can do design and they're also rabid audiophiles. These are the people who do the listening. I'm out here at the coast, so I do my own listening. I, I'm actually not influenced by what that procedure is. I, I don't influence that procedure over there and they don't actually influence me in terms of what I do in, in terms of the listening tests I, I, you know, I perform or, for that matter, well, actually anything, I independently, and so do they. We do manage to get enough communication, you know, at, at a distance and, and Wayne now lives out here. So he's just, he's just down the block, as it were. All these people listen and they all have opinions. They don't all come from it, from the same point of view. However, we have not had any problems reaching consensus on, on prototypes. Not that we have the same taste in music or even necessarily in loudspeakers. In fact, that's probably a good thing because around here, I, I tend to run, you know, variations on full range, high efficiency drivers. But you, you probably gather that because my toy company, First Watt, that's what all it does. Everything is limited to 25 watts or less. That's where I have a lot of fun. Also, I can afford to do anything I want at First Watt. At Pass Labs, there's a lot of money at stake on a national basis. And there's people who are employed and there's a lot of, you know, overhead and so on. You can't make foolish decisions or arbitrary decisions with regards to product, particularly with, you know, pricing, sound and all of that. So these decisions all come from a consensus. At First Watt, I just do whatever I want. I only have one chassis. So all these amplifiers, what is it? About 10 amplifiers out there now that have come and gone. There's only one chassis. I, I ordered a ton of them. I ordered enough for 2,000 amplifiers. I've just, I've used them up and they went on, they, they've got more.
Hey Nelson, I don't want to interrupt you here, but I saw that Tom, Tom Perazzella has a hand wave up. Tom, do you have a question?
Yeah, Nelson, I'd just like to get your take on some of the newer Class D amplifiers, especially the ones using gallium nitride, allowing them to operate in like in the 700 kilohertz range, making the output filtering a lot more gentle. Do you have any opinions on the direction that they're going and what the acoustic results are going to be in the future?
Well, I think these guys are geniuses. Okay, Bruno Putzes is a great example, premier designer. And and I know it's not easy to do because I did my own Class D amplifier years and years ago. And it is not a trivial thing. It's, it's not like they've actually revolutionized the topologies and such, but rather have continued to refine both the switching elements in turn, and mostly in terms of speed, but also the output filter on, on these, on these devices. And so you look at what they're getting, they're getting what I consider to be spectacular results. At the same time, I, I, I've always thought that it was a miracle that switchers worked at all. So to see them, you know, performing at that level is, is to my mind, totally amazing. Couple of things though, A, I personally, I, I personally don't actually have an interest in, in going in that direction. I'm having too much fun playing with what we probably think of as older, older technology. Perhaps twisting the parts and arranging them in a, in a different way or, and, and or finding some newer, newer or old, better parts. And, and continuing on that path. And the other thing is, is that I'm not chasing, I, for a long time, I have not chased specs. That started with Pass Labs with the original Aleph Zero product. And it was, this, it, it's a topology that is very simple. I use as MOSFETs because MOSFETs, you know, they got a slightly tube quality with the square law and such. But they also though allow for much simpler circuits than, than bipolar for getting the same performance. And that's my rationale for that. The let's see, well, the, the, the thing about, the, the thing about it ultimately is, is that I, I moved away from the raw measurement end of it. It was always raw measurement plus listening, but the emphasis was, there was a duality to that where it was equal emphasis and measurements and listening. Now the predominant factor is listening. And because we've started to find ways of enjoying things that, where we allow a small amount of distortion to creep in. Typically, probably already familiar, my, my hobby horse is to use some negative phase second harmonic as the character of the distortion. I like low distortion, but if I'm going to have distortion at all, I want the second phase, other phase, second harmonic. I arrived at that conclusion through listening tests with not only the Aleph products, but with the First Watts where again, I could do anything I want. So I built an SAT amplifier that had, you could adjust the phase and amplitude of the second harmonic or null it out altogether. And in listening to it, I formed some very strong opinions about what really worked and what didn't. And I had a knob that I could play with. And so it gave me an excellent handle on it instead of having to build new amplifiers and screw around with them. I had a knob. I built a bunch of those, I built 10 of them and passed them out to people. And I didn't tell them what the knob setting that was perfect was good for or anything, but they had a meter so they could tell me where they preferred it and they got to play with it. And I got not unanimous, but largely a consensus that of what the best spot on that, on that was in terms of their listening experience. And again, these are people who listen to different genres, different loudspeakers and so on. Although by then Tannoy's had crept in, into the, into the company space more, more often than anything else. If it wasn't that, it was probably Altex. People came back and consistently, the consensus was that they liked at a figure where it was negative phase second harmonic and the amplitudes were in the region of a percent or so at a watt. And then you could, you could turn the meter up and you could null that right out and make it go away. And so you had nothing but some third harmonic of a lesser amount, or you could keep turning and get second harmonic with positive phase, but this is what people liked. So I started concentrating on that and to this day, I still, I still prefer the, the situation where when you look at the waveform on a scope, distortion waveform, it's aligned with the, it's second harmonic and it's aligned with the fundamental in, in it, so that it's negative on all peaks of the fundamental. And so far that formula is working extremely well. I have no reason to abandon it at this time. So the, the guys doing switchers, they're not into that at all. The guys over at Audio Science Review, you know, they shake their head, but, you know, I keep telling them, this is entertainment. It's not dialysis, which was one of Joe Sammett's favorite phrases. He had, when he died, by the way, it came out with a small book of Joe's phrases, all of which were just amazing little comments that usually came as an answer to a problem where people couldn't figure out what the deal was. And, but which, you know, created a laugh and also pointed to a solution. So but the point was is that we, we've just, we've, we've gone over to the, the camp of people who like a little sweetening of a particular variety in their amplifier. And I always, you know, there's plenty of people who don't want that, who want it ultra-accurate, but I will say it's a very big marketplace. And the thing is, is that if I, if I have 1% of the business, a rich man, and I can afford to aim at the percentage of people who well, they like a little tubey distortion in, in the product.
Nelson, I, I wanted to get another question in there because we've got about six or seven minutes. Anybody else have another question? Nelson, I wanted to get another question in there because we've got about six or seven minutes. Anybody else have another question? Cause I, cause I have a couple here if anybody else doesn't want to, on the, oh, Rich.
Thank you. Have you ever designed a tube amp?
Yes. Um, my favorite of those is the, what is it? The 6C 33C, the big Russian triodes. You know, they're the one, the big, the big MIG regulator triodes and monsters. They're not the big, big monsters, but they are, they can be had. They kind of look like a, well, they, they, they're big triodes and I built a direct couple. In other words, no transformer, follower with, with a batch of those. It took, let's see, I think I had eight. I had 16 amps of cathode heater current. And it was a nice single ended triode, no feedback follower. You could drive it with anything. It sounded great. Of course, it would have been hell to produce and, 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 you know, dropped a lot of energy. And I have some other examples around here. Who else has done design work in this, in this realm? And like I say, not very seriously is Wayne, who I have a lovely pair of amplifier mono blocks here that he did with Pentos. And I've got some other people's single ended pieces, including a couple of Chinese pieces. Yeah. And you know, I like them, but they're, they're not, and they're not to my taste really.
All right. Hey, we have a question from Weldon. He has a question. Weldon?
Jessica, good evening. Thank you for this, Nelson. I have just a quick question about whether or not you think vibration control or damping in an amplifier is something worth pursuing or whether or not it's, it's too trivial to go after?
Well, you know, audio files, nothing is too trivial to go after. You know, I mean, people, people obsess about things. I don't obsess, but at the same time, I, I, I smile and look kindly upon anybody who does. And the thing is, is that you can't argue that such things don't make some sort of improvement. Microphonics and noise are elements that if you can eliminate them, makes for a better product. No matter, really no matter what your taste is. So God, I've got, we've got every reason to go ahead and, you know, pad the mounting. Well, in fact, I mean, at numerous times, Sammet was an excellent example. He was crazed about, you know, vibration analyzing and he would mount everything up on these big, you know, the big rubber things. I mean, that's, you should see the turntable bases that he built and I, and I have one of them here. Fabulous stuff. He obsessed about that. I, I personally didn't ever particularly appreciate it, but I, I appreciate it in the sense that it's all part of a larger picture. You know, what, what it is we're doing. I, and I just have to specialize in those things that I'm particularly good at.
One interruption here. I was just able to extend the, the meeting here. I figured out a way to do it. So, so now we can get our original estimation of time in there. Let's see, who, who had a question? Was that Alan?
Hi, it's a pleasure to meet you, Nelson Pass. It's, it's, I've been a longtime admirer. I have a question about the GFA 555s, if you don't mind taking it.
Sure.
Okay. I, I found that adding additional high frequency bypassing to those large electrolytic capacitors, spreading it around and making sure everything on that power line was properly bypassed with smaller, better high frequency capacitors made an enormous difference in the quality of the treble, the high end of that amplifier. And I, I'm just puzzled by why there was so little attention to that when it was originally done. It may not have been your fault. It may have been turned over to somebody at AdCom for that.
Well, AdCom was on a budget. And in fact, that was a fairly budget amplifier. And the other thing is that people weren't paying as much attention to this back then. It wasn't even considered to be much of an issue.
Well, it's a hell of an amplifier.
Well.
Good job.
It was very popular. And I, I did go on to, well, after I started Pass Labs, see, the people at AdCom has always been, you know, you have good friends in this industry and the guys at AdCom were among the best. And so any, I was always in a situation of doing anything I could to help them along. And that's how I ended up designing the auto sound stuff for them also. I know I mentioned other company. Anyways, oh, Soundstream, but, but subsequent to that, I had, I, I did the AdCom auto sound, which were not as successful. And the reason for that apparently was is that they sounded too much like home hi-fi. And the aesthetic in auto sound is different. You don't really want the home hi-fi effect. Anyways, so, but so I went, I went back and redesigned. They wanted a new generation. So that became the 5500 and its siblings. And we took them, brought them over from bipolar to MOSFETs and did some other things. But these were, these are all classic designs. I mean, in the sense that, you know, the, the front end, there were other front ends that looked like that. There were other output stages that looked like that. You, you, you just, you just reach out like Picasso and steal whatever it is that comes to, comes to mind and, and is convenient. So it was just simply things that were put together and the guys at AdCom were looking to have a, a product that sounded good, didn't break, didn't cost that much money to make. And they managed to get all three of those things. It was, it was a good shot. And it was the beginning of a very good, long-term relationship.
Nelson, I
Thank you.
I had a question on the AdCom, but you also designed the big amp, right? The 5800 as well? Yeah, that which
That was after I started Pass Labs. In other words, that was when they went to MOSFETs.
Right, right. So was that, I think I had mentioned in the question. So was that sort of like the for run? Or was it in parallel with what you were doing at Pass Labs at that time?
It was parallel.
Yeah.
It actually, I, I was able to simply adapt some of the things that I had worked up at Pass Labs in terms of, of circuits. By, by the time that, because there was, there was a lag here where initially I was building just single ended Class A. But at the same time, as, as my wife can testify, I build amplifiers all the time. I mean, I have, I have six storage units in the, in this area filled with amplifiers and the parts that go into them so that I can just continue to do whatever I want. And, and if, if they, if the product looks like it's got some potential, I, I send it over to the boys at the factory and they get to play with it. And, and they're very competent. So they typically they find some way of improving it and they also find some way of deciding whether or not it should be put into production. But well.
All right. Wait, another question?
I was going to say, AdCom simply benefited from this inventory of things that hadn't gone anywhere yet.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Alan, you have another question?
Quick one. Yeah, we, we've answered the AdCom question. I appreciate that. The, the, the question I have, oh, it's not a question. It's a compliment. I really want to thank you for what you've done on your do it, your do it yourself. Your do it yourself pursuits. You've been an enormous support to the community and you've been very open and helpful with what you know and helping others to learn the way. And that's a big deal. You're a good guy. Thank you.
Oh, well, let me comment on that though. First off, it's a lot of fun. As I already mentioned, I build amplifiers. That's what I do every day, whether they have a purpose or not. And so, and, and I have a, a large quantity of things that I can't, I can't, I, I don't have a position to go do commercially. It would just be too much to try and be not enough focused so it would fail to be successful economically. So with some of the cherries that come out on top are, and end up in production, but there's tons and tons of things that are fun, interesting, and many of them, in fact, I, I already mentioned, I really love simple circuits. I think they sound better as in the, in the context of, you know, apart from everything else, they tend to sound better given the same set of specs, for example. But I've got just lots of stuff and you hate to see it go unused. But on top of that, I, I, I'm a DIYer myself. I really appreciate the kind of crowd that you get when you're dealing with people who build their own stuff. They are, as far as I can make out, the happiest audio files because they get to participate so deeply in, in the equipment. The other thing though, that's, that's really worth noting here is that I get a lot back from these guys because they build the stuff and they tell me what they think. They also spot problems and go, oh, this doesn't work. Well, I've got this problem or that problem. And so you, you, you start having a large bank account of information that just because they're building them and give you feedback. The other thing is too, the popularities of these products tells me something about the customer and their tastes. And that's very valuable information. And then lastly, there's one last element. The number of times that I've had somebody online, usually a DIY audio go, oh, Mr. Pass, have you seen this? And they'll point me to something and I'll go, oh, no, I had not. Thank you very much. And that's how I got involved with SIT, for example, is somebody pointed me to some SITs and, and the Sony, oh, well, yeah, how the, the whole project with the amp, not in camp, but the Sony V-FET, of which we managed to get a couple of hundred amplifiers out the door to DIYers in, using the last of the inventory on the planet, as far as I can make out, of the Sony V-FETs came from a guy who said, oh, you know, they've got, they've got Sony V-FETs for sale over here in Singapore. And I, I went over there and I found out they had something like 3,000 pair. Or maybe it was 3,000. I can't remember which because they're all gone now. But I went, wow. So I bought 2,000. And then I told the DIYers, there's a thousand of these things left over there. You'd better go get them while you can. And don't blame me when you can't. And so, and in the end, actually they all, with the exception of some amp, some versions that were made just for Sony for their 40th anniversary commemorative V-FET amplifier, which we, we did as a project. Because Sony is very good friends of ours and customers too. So we did this commemorative amplifier and gave it to Sony. There were six of, six channels. But apart from that, they all went into DIY and, and people playing. So I get, but this is an ongoing, continuous thing. I, I, so I get lots back. I enjoy talking to DIYers, but the other thing is they, they give as much as they, as they get.
We have a question from Ali Gobadi. Ali?
Well, see, you're, you're down, you're down there.
Ali, your mic's off. Turn your mic on.
Got it.
Okay.
We are. It's been great to, to hear from you and I'm really enjoying it. And I'm getting a peek into your lab in the background without getting any secrets. Can you share with us maybe some of the things that are coming down the pipe that are sort of circulating right now?
I'll share one thing.
Okay.
Let's see. Got to disconnect this. I'll drive with you.
Hot off the press.
That's almost got it. Okay. I had to disentangle it from all the other wiring. This is, we got, okay. There, see that? The circuit board. It's a front end for an amplifier and the design is general. You can stick it in front of any kind of output stage that's a follower. Okay. And it's got nice double O specs and you can build a nice, let's see. Well, this one here is probably would, would be the voltage of these transistors, new J-Pets is, is, is I can go plus minus 30 volts, which gets us to about 50 watts a channel. And you could run them, you could bridge, you could bridge them and get a couple hundred. So anyways, that's, that's on a 1.8 inch by three inch board and has very, very few parts. I showed this off, the schematic real quick at Burning App Festival. I have 250 of those boards to go off to the store at DIY and we are shooting for a $10 cost people to purchase them. So. And I think we'll make that because I, I'm coming in at about five, six bucks and it costs about five bucks to get something in and out of the store at DIY. So there we are. And it's the front end for anything that would be a follower up to those kind of power levels. I wouldn't particularly drive bipolar. It's really, really geared around MOSFETs, but it's, it's, it's totally flat to 200K. It's got a balanced input, single ended output. It has common mode rejection for balanced input. This morning I was reading, coming in at, you know, the high 70 dB figures and there are just very few FET transistors, as I said, almost, almost no parts. Where's the camera? There. That's that, in fact, half that is, is the power supply filter. So make sure that it gets clean power supply. So that's going to happen. That's happening for DIY right now. I have, I maintain a spreadsheet. It's my to do spreadsheet and it goes, it goes back about 10 years now. I kid you not. And it's, it's just got, you know, lists of projects that I could or should be doing for Pass Labs, First Watt, Pass Works, which is the DIY end of it. And well, actually that's it. And it, it's, it's a filled sheet. And so it's mostly a case of, you know, where, how much pressure do I feel in any given arena? And the other end of it is, what do I want to work on today? What, what's, because sometimes you really don't want to do anything. And you, you have to find something that you really want to do. And is it a big enough list that I can always find something? And well.
All right. Hey, we have a question from Ron Ziegel. Ron? Your mic is off. Hello, Ron? We're not hearing you. Your mic is off.
He'll be back.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have a question? I have a couple of questions here, but if there's anybody else, I'll hold mine. Okay, Mark?
Hi, thanks. Mr. Pass, this has been a very interesting talk and I, it brings back a lot of nostalgia, your, your discussion of your early work. I, I know my dad in the early 1970s had bought some ESS Hile speakers at the time. They were kind of revolutionary. There wasn't anything else like them with the air motion transformers, tweeters on top of them. And they were really something. They, I'd never heard anything, you know, I was in high school at the time. And I'd never heard anything like them. They're, they're quite revolutionary. I didn't realize that you had that connection to them. That was part of your history. But in thinking about that and thinking back on those days, I can't really think of speakers like that. They were, they were very unique at the time. And I'm not sure if there's anything like that, that's sort of inherited that, that kind of interesting position of that, that interesting combination of, I figure what they used. They probably used imported woofers or something, but the
No, they were, they were, they were Gefkos out of, they were in the US. Earlier on, earlier on, they had been using KEF drivers.
Well, what, what, there's nothing really like that today. I mean, they, they had a little niche. They had, they didn't really, or am I, am I missing something? Is there something that, that sort of inherited that niche today, you think?
Well, I don't know. I recently bought some ESS drivers and it came with free headphones. It was not a bad deal. But you know, the, I, even in amplifiers, you look at what's out there and there's not a lot that's incredibly new. And so mostly what we're seeing And so mostly what we're seeing is people doing intelligent design work with parts that, for the most part, already existed. Better versions than the early days. The transistors are better and so on, so forth. There was a question here about the switching technology, gallium nitride. And let's see, what was the other? Somewhere. Oh, well, the gallium nitride. But there's a couple of other new technologies in transistors that I recently spent a nice small, a nice small pile of money buying up samples of everything I could get ahold of, the silicon carbide, the gallium nitride. And there's another one whose name I've forgotten. And hooking them into circuits and simple circuits. In other words, my idea of a good time is to take a one transistor circuit driving just a resistor. And I've got power supplies and analyzers. What does it do? How does it behave? What is it like? What's it take to drive it? You know, and so on. And you get a real feel for a lot of what these things can do. And there's no particular consensus as to, in terms of linear work, okay? Which is all I really, all I'm interested in. Gallium nitride and a couple of the others are fabulous switches. And there's no question but that that whole technology is just advancing. But it has very little to do with me. And the thing was, is I went, well, but let's see what they'll do for linear. Well, I discovered that a lot of the switchers that are coming out, the ones that are ultrafast and have got the really, really low saturation voltages and so on, they are designed as switches. They were not designed with linear operation in mind. In other words, you hook it, put it in an amplifier, it's going to croak. Here's a transistor rated at 300 watts. But if I put 10 watts through it, 10 volts at one amp, it dies because it has no safe operating area between fully on and fully off. In fact, they specify how much time you can spend lollygagging between those two states. And it's in microseconds. So, so a lot of, you know, there's all sorts of hot new technology. But in the end, I, you know, I look at, a lot of the things that I do are either things that I thought of myself and then discovered later that somebody else had thought of them back in the 50s or, you know, and then everybody forgot about it and so on. There's very few, very little in the way of new invention. You do have people who are doing novel things and they are putting their own twist on product. And largely, though, for the example of being subjective about the sound and what they like. Because we inherited a taste for some second harmonic in our tube gear. Grew up with that stuff. I think that's part of the deal. We love vinyl. We're all imprinted with it at an early age. And so a lot of the technologies that are involved, especially when you look at it from a subjective standpoint, are old. You know, I mean, DAX and so on have gotten hyper accurate. Let me share one other thing real quickly. And that is, I like to pull some kind of a trick in a product. And like I say, having some second harmonic in the distortion character at more than really, really low levels is, becomes a trick. But I find that as a rule, you probably only want to be performing tricks once in a particular category. You don't want, as a rule, and this is my own feeling on it. I've seen examples where not correct. But I wouldn't want to have a preamp with a second, a negative phase second or even lots of second, and then made it with an amp with lots of second. It's, I think of it as probably too much of a good thing. Now, that's not to say that I haven't run across people who've done it and said, I love it. It's absolutely wonderful. And I'm going, okay, well, that's good. This is subjective area. But when we look at the thing about accuracy and what's new and what's not new, I tend to, if I'm going to do something from the old days, I tend to use an old idea just once in a system. Isolate it out as its own thing. Partly because I appreciate the difference that it makes. I like to dote on those kinds of items and fantasize as to what fabulous hearing I have. And to me, that's part of the entertainment is hearing things differently. Different speakers, different arrangements of the same speaker, screwing around with crossovers, a little EQ there, change the photo cartridge. Oh, by the way, you know, asked a question here about vinyl versus digital. When I'm listening to amplifiers, I use digital. Because it's very consistent. I can, in fact, I have what I call short takes, which are abbreviated versions of tunes that fade in and fade out so that I can go through about one a minute. In fact, I use them at shows like Burning App Festival where people don't want to listen to a half hour worth of classical when they're, you know, and they've got some show tune that they'd rather have. So we just run through stuff automatically. It fades, it comes in and it fades out. And it lasts for approximately a minute or even less. And you get kind of the highlights of all sorts of things that you get to hear. And I use, that's a completely digital system where everything is pretty accurate. However, it's at the moment driving full range speakers. And I vacillate between my Louthers and my Lees or my Cubes. And I've got a couple others. Partly because I just enjoy that. But also, you know, properly done, I find that they articulate mid-range in a manner that I appreciate. And you can, you know, this is articulation is when you can make out the lyrics on old songs you never knew were there or always wondered what they were. And you go, oh, that's what they're singing. Oh, goddammit. And so that's the kind of speaker that I really like. Now, mind you, that's where I listen to amplifiers. And I've got a room set aside just for that. And then I have upstairs, She Who Must Be Obeyed has a system that is a pair of, passed out of the SR1s, which is a four-way SEOS system, beautifully, beautifully made, which we no longer make. And it sounds great. It's neutral. It's getting far more toward some of what the big boys put out, the guys like Magico and Wilson and so on, where it's dynamic, it's not very efficient, it's fairly low impedance, needs some power and so on. But I, it's, that's where we go for our entertainment. I listen to vinyl there. In fact, I never listened to any digital there. And so we're split. And then, of course, there is my workroom where I am entertained by a nice glass of wine and a pair of Jordan J92s right on either side of the screen here that play all day long. Mostly lounge music, stuff from the years 1998 to 2004.
We have a couple more questions here, but I want to go back. Tom, you had run the bell on a question. You had another follow-up question, correct? Tom Perazzella?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention something to Mark. He was talking about the Hile AMTs. There are a lot of people out there right now using AMTs. But I think what you want to be careful about is not looking at a particular design of a driver, just like you wouldn't pick an amplifier based on one particular component. There's a lot of things to producing a good sounding speaker. One of the most important is the interaction with the room. And when you get something like the AMTs, you have to be very careful if they're being used in a dipole or a monopole fashion, what the radiation pattern looks like compared to the other drivers, how they interact with the room. I mean, if you look behind me, you can see the room treatments I have, which complement the speakers that I built there. So it is not just a particular driver or a particular technology. It is the integration of all the factors involved and matching them to the room.
Well, that's where the fun is.
Yeah.
I would never want to actually just sit down and just listen to music. That's not, that's not nearly as much fun as screwing around with everything.
A question from Steve Coyne. Steve, you still there?
Complementary symmetry amp. End-channel MOSFETs on both sides.
Oh, okay, he's on the text, yeah.
I can comment on that. I mean, they do exist. The best example is the Circletron. And you can, and you can build complementary. Well, I've got other complementary amps. I published schematics and everything in the article about the F6 first watt amplifier. It has two output devices, which are end-channel J-Pets. And their drive is isolated by transformers. So, and so they are perfect symmetry to the extent that those parts match each other exactly. But since they are the same part and taking out the same latko and measured for the same, it's about as close as you're going to get to being a pure complement. It doesn't mean it's perfect. It does tend to get rid of the second harmonic real clean, real well. Which, by the way, you can bring back in. But I've got a pot on that product where you can adjust that if you want. Clearly, a very powerful technique. It's, you know, if you're trying, if you're shooting for low distortion, that is how you go. Unless you are a switching guy.
Chris Barker, you had a question?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up Nelson on your discussion about digital. I'd like to know what you think about the state of art of DAX today. We have DAX now that are reaching incredible levels of low distortion and noise way below our threshold of hearing. And in fact, measurement devices almost can't measure the, how quiet these are. And also, I would be interested to know about what your thoughts are on streaming music. I read a statistic recently that 85% of the world is streaming music now. And any thoughts in that area?
Well, let's see. Streaming music first. I don't stream music. Because, I don't know, I just don't. But I, you know, one of the reasons I love vinyl, besides being imprinted in the old days with it, is that it's got a lot of physicality to it. Sure, it's got imperfections, but I enjoy those imperfections as well. And I don't mind the pops and the clicks and the occasional bit of noise. And the thing is, is that I like vinyl because I like, it's physical. I like bringing, you know, taking the, taking vinyl, taking the record out of, off the shelf, admiring the work of art that is the cover on it, opening it up, you know, taking it out, giving it a good polish before I put it on my bassist turntable. And, you know, and spinning it. And, you know, it's great. And unlike streaming, you can't just click the button to the next tune arbitrarily. You have to actually get up. And so you, you tend to enjoy whole sides of a series of performances or whatever it is that the artist is offering, more as it was intended. And with streaming, I find that it's, and the same thing, too, with, you know, CDs are just one cut towards streaming, which is you can still kick, you can still kick it forward with the remote. In fact, I've got some 300 CD changers where you stack, you can stack three of them. You've got 900 CDs there and you can flip through them without ever getting out of your seat. But, you know, as I say, that's the progression toward being in a position where you, you aren't necessarily paying attention except to individual tunes and maybe not even that. And it's too easy to skip through them. I've always found, I mean Frank, my Frank Zappa collection, which is complete. Oh, I'm a collector, let me tell you. But my Zappa collection consists of records that, a large number of records that I bought just because it was a Zappa when it came out. And I would listen to it and I hated it. But there was one tune that I liked well enough that I'd go back later and hear it again. Okay? And because it was vinyl, I would accidentally hit some other tune that was after it that I didn't like. But after a while, I started to kind of warm up to the stuff that I didn't like. And then the years go by and I go back to that record. And the ones that I loved the most, the cuts I loved the most were the ones that I hated the most first time around. Now, go figure. But I think only with vinyl are you going to actually kind of like enjoy that effect. I think that, I think that the digital is just simply too easy for me. It doesn't, it doesn't encourage you. I mean, I'm not arguing with the performance of the reproduction or anything else. And I think it's great and amazing. But I just find myself missing out when I, when I have a remote that can kick me to the next tune too quickly.
Yep. All right, any other questions? I have one question before we go. We've got five or six minutes here. The Pass Labs stuff, what's your favorite amplifier that you've ever built over there and listened to?
Pardon me?
Your favorite, your favorite design? Like...
I always tell people the next one. Because in truth, it's like talking about your children, you know?
Yeah.
I love them all. I remember all of the creation in them. I remember the process that I enjoyed. I remember the elation at finally getting something done and also getting everybody else to agree that it was the next product. And so I just, you know, going all the way back to that little non-switcher that I built in '72. You know, they all mean a lot to me. And I would, I can tell you which ones have made me the most amount of money, I suppose. But that's not the same thing.
Yeah. Yeah, my favorite series, I think, I mean, I've sampled them all from the, from the early days, the Alephs, the original X, the .5, the .8 or whatever. I was always a big fan of the XA 30.5. I think that's a great amplifier. And on the XA 25, the .8, that's a great amp. And on the first watt, always loved the F3. Always thought that was a really good one as well.
The F3 was the first example of, oh, here's your, here's your ability to adjust phase on the distortion. Although I sent them out, no. So they got those great numbers. But, well, the 30.5s, I have actually a pair of 60.5s here, which I dearly love. There, that's in my, that's in the system upstairs. It never gets altered by proclamation of, as I say, she who must be obeyed. And so, but, and I would go to 60.8s. But they are actually too heavy and too large for the shelf that I've got them on. And so I just, I've spent 12 years now, I think, or so, with the 60.5s. I still love them, they're great.
Yep, very good. Alan, you've got, we're getting close to the end here. You have a question?
Appreciate it. A quick question about stasis. I, on the basis of what you've written, and by the way, I really am grateful that you've written some of your ideas down on paper. It's great that when you do that, it's part of my idea of excellence and conduct.
I can't depend on everybody else to brag for me, you know, so I have to write.
Well, and I agree with that. Okay, so stasis. So my impression of stasis, when I saw examples of it in your designs, was there was an attempt to make sure that the operating conditions for game-producing devices were kept relatively constant. You know, either by tricks like cascode or other topologies. And man, and if a threshold was any indication of the wisdom of that, go for it, man. That was a great idea. But you suggested something different about stasis. You suggested it had something to do with feed forward. And I got confused about that earlier today, tonight.
Well, at the time, of course, Quad was using the phrase feed forward, which doesn't necessarily have much of a definition. I think Oxford is probably the guy who put the most amount of documentation on that. But I used it in a more general sense, which is you have a big output stage and a little output stage that are operating together. You can afford to run the little portion of it full Class A and let the, let the big boys run Class AB. The idea also is that you've got a front end that's running feedback such that you can, you can, it can make corrections, you know, coming into the input of the output stage, which is classic. But the little Class A output stage is capable of delivering, you know, correction current on top of that. In other words, it's capable of bypassing the main output stage when the conditions are that of not enough speed or maybe the output stage itself is glitching slightly because it transitions into Class B on the...
Is that what you mean by stasis?
Yes, well, the other, the original, yes, is that. But there was another element of that. But, and that was... But, and that was, is that we cascoded the first generations of those so as to hold constant voltage across the output stage. So the attempt here was to, well, recognizing that all distortion comes from alterations in current and alterations in voltage, we look to suppress the amount of variation that each transistor was experiencing. So its distortion would go down, and of course, yeah, it worked like glue.
Thank you. Time for one more question. Mr. Coyne has a question on text again, I believe. Are you still there, Steve? I don't know if he's here then.
The little symbol here shows no microphone.
Yeah, no more questions. So, all right, well, that's all the questions I have. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Pass?
I got the time.
We'll have to do it again sometime.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Nelson, all the good work you've done over the years, all those great...
A pleasure to talk to you all.
Hey, Nelson, I have a present I'll send to you. I have a, it's, you may have it. I don't know how much you like classical music, but I have the copy of the, or it's a remaster of the Mercury Living Presence first orchestral recording. It was a Mazursky Pictures at an Exhibition 1951 single...
That would be terrific.
Yeah, so I'll send you that. It's a digital. They remastered it at Abbey Road last year. They've released it on vinyl and CD, so I'll send you a link to it, and you just download it.
Great. Excellent. That'd be much appreciated.
Right. Well, thanks very much for, you know, coming on board with us, the DC Hi-Fi Group. We really appreciate it. Like I said, we have a lot of Pass Labs fans. There's quite a few of our members who have amps and preamps and such, so keep up the great work.
Well, like I always like to say, cheers.
All right. Tell Desmond I said hey.
I'll do that. Thanks so much, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Take care. We'll do it again.
All right. Good night.
Good night.